I thank very much, Councilman, any other comments by members of this body? Councilman DeCecio?
Just as a follow-up, just as a point to, I mean, I don't know much about those charts or anything else, but this I do know. There's a difference between our city and other cities, there just is. I mean, we're a central urban city, we have urban issues, and we have, I perceive at least, a lot more violence in our city than Scottsdale, or Paradise Valley, or something like that. Yeah, one, those other cities aren't down proportionately the same amount of officers that we are down. They don't have as many shootings that are occurring in those cities, last time at least I checked, that they do. So, there is a difference between our city and other cities, and when you're down that many officers, you gotta, you gotta give somewhere. I mean, something's gotta give. Either we're gonna have a plan in place to hire a lot more officers. Fifteen ain't gonna cut it. I mean, that's almost an embarrassment to be able to go to our citizenry, not just the police officers that are here, but our citizenry, and say, hey, we're gonna hire fifteen, and be able to hand our hands up in the air. Doesn't make sense. It needs to be a lot more than that. It just, literally, in the plan that Councilman Waring and I were just working, when you see this back and forth on, it's so benign, it's so lame, that it has to work. I mean, why wouldn't we cut travel, conferences, association dues, lobbying? It just doesn't make sense to be able to spend that much money on something, when you've got other levels of prioritization there. And so, that's all this is about. It's literally to give the council something so politically easy to do, politically easy to do, and show our support to police, but not only to the police, but to the citizens of the city of Phoenix, by presenting a comparison of where the money ought to go, and where the money is going. And I think that there's a lot more money left over for other groups as well. Thank you.
I thank very much. Any other comments by members of this council? I want to, oh, Councilman Valenzuela, please.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I agree with Councilwoman Williams on the travel. Frankly, I've done some traveling in the first couple of years in office. Last year, we awarded the COPS grant $1.83 million, and some of that had to do with travel, traveling, meeting with the Department of Justice numerous times. Also, traveling to, you know, meet with FEMA and Homeland Security for UAWC grant funding, safer grants. You know, frankly, whatever hiring we were able to do comes by way of grants, so that's our traveling. So, let's not, let's not cut a few thousand dollars of travel and miss out on potentially millions of dollars in grants. And by the way, we're applying for the COPS grant once again this year, so hopefully we'll be successful. Again, I just want to mention a few things. I also agree that we're not finished, you know, just as I explained to, to ask me, I, you know, I'm hoping no one has finished negotiating, because there still is a week left, and I'm speaking as, again, as an elected official, but also as a city employee myself, and yes, as a first responder. And I gotta tell you, when I first came to this dais, I made it very clear that my priority is public safety. And maybe it's because I've dedicated my life to keeping people safe as a firefighter. But I said that I would, you know, my priority is public safety, it's the number one priority of any government, and I made it very clear, public safety, we need more police officers. You know, thankfully, the safer grant is easier to, I shouldn't, there's a lot of hard work that goes into a safer grant for firefighters, but it is more obtainable than it is to obtain a COPS grant. And, you know, that takes a lot of hard work, and so now we are 500-plus police officers below where we need to be, and, you know, I've been very supportive, and I'll continue to be very supportive, because not only do I support our police officers as a policymaker, but I support our police officers as a first responder, Phoenix police officers. We have an automatic aid system in the valley, and I run calls all the time in Phoenix, and probably with some of the people that were in this room. And, and what I will say is, and I understand, I appreciate that emotions were high, but I have to tell you, since taking office, from day one, I've talked about the importance, hoping that that voice would come from this council, and that all, you don't always hear that from this council, but trying to do away with the polarizing debate of us versus them. Doesn't have to be, you know, right or left. We have no choice, as I see it, we have to balance this budget. First of all, it is the law, okay? But also, as policymakers, as city staff, as community leaders, business leaders, for the sake of our constituents, we have to balance this budget, and we have to come together. And I heard a lot about the us versus them, especially with fire, and, you know, and I understand that the emotion is high, you know, heard a lot about the four-person on a fire truck, that's an NFPA standard, that's not an overtime scheme, that's an NFPA standard, and I gotta tell you, if there weren't four firefighters on every fire truck, we probably would have far more fatalities than we have now in the fire service. That doesn't mean that I don't support more police officers, I'm the, you know, I pushed for the COPS grant, I'll continue to push in budget hearings, and I'll be pushed from this platform here, you know? But, we just have to be careful, for the sake of our constituents, and for the overall public safety family that it is, we just have to be careful to, and hopefully stay away from the us versus them message and mentality, because I don't see, I've never, I've never practiced that. And so, so again, I do understand that emotions are high, and I respect that. I, you know, I'm willing to take the ride along, I've done that before, in fact, I'm willing to invite people also, if you'd like to do that. I'll continue to work with your labor leaders, talk with them, they probably did not meet with an elected official up here more than they have with me. And that'll continue, of course, at their discretion, and, you know, as long as, you know, it's done correctly. And, but, but I do, again, I want to just recap by stating the travel, everything should be looked at, but let's not, I mean, let's, let's stay focused on the overall agenda here of moving this city forward. And, and secondly, there still is a week, as I understand it, before we meet again in this setting, and no one should just hang up, you know, the negotiations for now. Everyone should be continuing to sit at that negotiations table, and continue to find that solution, and I, for one, will continue to find solutions as well.
Thank you very much. Councilman Gates?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. One, I thought there was a really good question asked by Sean Mattson, which was, back in 2010, we had a $277 million deficit, and we asked the employees to take a 3.2 percent concession, and this time around, we have a $38 million deficit, but the employees are being asked to take a 4.1 percent concession. I think that's a good question, that's a very good question. We need to, we need to delve into that deeper in the next few days. But I think that everything needs to be on the table, I'm happy to hear a lot of my colleagues talking about that. Two things, one is the contingency fund. This is a rainy day fund, it's at an all-time high for the city. If, I think somebody said earlier, if it isn't raining now, when is it raining? I think we need to look at that, we need to look at that very seriously, while still maintaining our, our bond rating at, at the current level. And I think, again, as we heard a lot of comments here earlier this evening, we need to set some stretch goals on efficiency. It's time to redouble those efforts, as we've done in the past, and I think we need to really push ourselves to see if we can find the funds that we need to do to provide the proper support for our city and for our employees. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman Gates. Any other comments by members of this, of this council? I do, there was a lot of testimony here tonight, obviously it's been a late night.
Mayor, I have some.
Councilman Nowakowski, please, go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, there's some questions I have for staff. Ed, I would like to find out what the impact to the pension is with the police proposal that they have right now. And if you don't have that answer, if you can give that to me later, that'd be great.
Okay. That's certainly a fair question, unless we have an answer, or do we have something now relative to the impact on pension for what the management has proposed?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Nowakowski. The pension savings from the ending of the spiking in the plea contract comes to $1 million in contributions, we will not have to make the pension in the first year.
Councilwoman Nowakowski, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Do you have any?
Then the other thing is, I heard a lot, I wasn't able to see the charts, but there was a lot of conversations about the overtime. Can you explain that to me? The overtime work, police officers versus firefighters? That was kind of confusing.
Excellent. Yeah, there were some charts relative to a comparison between members of the Phoenix Fire Department versus Police Department, and how, and overtime issues. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Nowakowski, members of the council, there is a difference in overtime related to Federal Fair Labor Standards Act and OSHA requirements, Ms. Bezary has the detail on that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nowakowski, because our firefighters work what's called a pay-period schedule under the Fair Labor Standards Act, they're required by their 56-hour week to receive six hours of overtime each pay period under that act. Additionally, the Fire Department has a constant staffing model, which ensures that we have four people on an apparatus, two in, two out, which is the National Fire Protection Act, as well as now it is an OSHA standard, and Arizona is an OSHA state. Those two are the primary areas of overtime in that budget.
One other area of overtime that happens with fire, the federal deployments for the search and rescue teams, such as just went to Washington State, those are paid for by federal funds, but they show up in our overtime budget.
Okay. And then the other thing is, do we have any checks or balance on, on a monthly basis? Because I'm the chairperson for the Public Safety Subcommittee. I would like to have some type of check or balance when it comes to overtime on both police officers and firefighters. So, if we start seeing that there is a trend of overtime going above what's budgeted, that, that we can actually stop it before it becomes an issue like it is now, and how can we be good stewards of, of the budget, right?
Mayor, Mr. Nowakowski, we can add that as a standing item for the Public Safety Subcommittee.
And then the other thing is, I just really want to thank our, all the families and all the police officers that came out and spoke. I think it's, when you go out there in the community, and you have community meetings, the number one issue is that we need more police officers, and, and the campaigns that you have with Coffee on, Coffee with the Cops, and your involvement with the community and outreach, I mean, it's really working, the, the way that the community has come together with the PNP program, and the Block Watch programs and all that, that you have these volunteers that are working alongside by side with police officers, and the respect that police officers are getting now is just amazing, so we'll be, we'll be doing our best to make sure that we keep all those police officers on the streets and protecting our city. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Councilman, any other comments by members of this, of this council? Councilman Gallego, please.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone who has stuck with us at this late hour for this very important debate. There's been some very moving testimony, and appreciate people who are willing to share their personal stories. A certain theme today, to me, was that our employees sacrifice a lot, and it is across many, many areas of the city, so I hope we can find a solution that is fair to all employees. I, like Councilwoman Williams and Nowakowski, have heard very often that we really need more officers on the streets, so that's something that I'd like to see us work for as well. I'd like us to look at some of the people who use our services and overtime, and look and see as, so I would add to the list that Councilman DeCecio requested, are there partners, including partners in County Islands where we provide security services, and we could more fully reimburse for those costs to the city? Because we also want our business partners to be part of this solution, we are asking everyone to sacrifice, and we should do that very broadly, so I would add that to the list. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments?
And, Mayor, just for the record?
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Nowakowski.
I do support the food tax being put on a ballot where the residents of the city of Phoenix can vote on it, if, if they want to have a food tax.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilman Pastor?
So, when I ran, I ran for safety of neighborhoods, and ran for public safety and first responders of, of our neighborhoods, because I feel that when our neighborhoods are strong and they're safe, then everything else is vibrant and moves. And our economy, people want to invest in our, in our city, and also want to be part of our, our city. I also think that, across the board, I'm a supporter of all employees, and all employees across this city that makes the city run efficiently and effectively. However, I do think we need to go back to looking at some efficiencies. And, for me, this, with this budget, everything's on the table. And vacancies, all of it, and start to, my directive is to look to see what we can and cannot do. My directive is also, we need to figure it out. And, it's also, it's disheartening, because when I ran, and I was one of the rare birds that was running, I supported the food tax. And I supported the food tax, and was willing to, at the time when they were having this discussion, I said I would not want it to go away, I would only support it going away if it didn't mean cutting services. And here we are today, looking at the fact that we will be cutting services. And so, I'm a little, as, as I go through this process, and then, of course, it's my first time going through a budget, and it's a major budget, it, I find it very interesting that from one week, or four weeks, it was doom and gloom, and then four weeks later, we can cut it, or we can repeal pieces of it. And, as I go through this process, I keep asking, you know, how do I trust what is being given to me? Because I watched, as I was campaigning, how fluid the budget or the food tax conversation went. And so, I am just saying that I am doing my due diligence, looking at everything, and will be, when I have to vote, you will understand where I'm at. So, thank you, thank you for being here, it's been a late night, but Ed, we need to get it done.
Mayor?
All right, thank you very much. Councilman DeCecio, do you have something? Yeah, I mean, wouldn't it, I mean, if you believe, not just you, all right, I didn't mean it that way, but I mean, if anyone believes that there are, then just vote on it. I don't, I think that there's so many other areas you can look at first, that you would want to look, I mean, why would you want to protect travel? Wouldn't you want to protect people's food? And, if you're gonna do it, then just vote on it and do it, instead of, I mean, it doesn't show a lot of, you know, that, if you're gonna send everything to the voters on something like that. I mean, I, I think that the leadership position that the city ought to take is either you're gonna do it, or you're not. If you're not gonna do it, then just don't do it, and start looking at the things that are really, really wasteful here, like there are travel budgets, or conferences, association dues, those are the things that the public wants us to. So, what we're saying is, we'd rather tax the poor, and put more money on their, on their shoulders, rather than look at efficiencies internally, because no one wants to touch those things, because everybody gets fun, and it's nice and travel, and those kinds of things. So, look at that first, is all I'm saying, before we start, and that's what I want to find out from staff next week, find out how big those budgets are, and then let's see how much money we can, you know, protect the police. It's not that complicated. And you know what? Our job isn't that hard, it's not tough, okay? A lot of people have a lot harder jobs than we do, this is actually easy compared to what the people, yeah, what you out there and people in the public have to deal with. Thank you.
I thank you very much. I should have mentioned earlier that there were plenty of white cards as well, that, for not to speak, supporting the position of the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association. I've been on city council since the year 2000, serving nine years in the council, and now two and a half years as mayor. I've always had a good, close working relationship with the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association, I very much appreciated that relationship. Two years ago, we had a tough choice, and obviously, the, we almost got to this point, two years ago, we didn't quite get to this point, because there was a, an agreement on an AMU, and it was a very close vote of this council, it was a four, four, one vote to support Phoenix Law Enforcement Association, I was very glad to be a part of that. Obviously, at the time, a lot of accusations about things that were in the contract, it was too much, some of the personnel payment policies, et cetera, were criticized. I thought it was the right, tough choice, but the right choice under the circumstances. We're not voting on this tonight, I know there's gonna hopefully be some even more negotiation going on, my hope is that they come back with it, with still an agreement. Again, last year, it looked like we weren't gonna be able to get there, and I'm hopeful that we can, that we can get there, that, that we ought to, again, look at various things, even some of the issues that Councilman Gates brought up, to, to bridge that gap, and next week, I hope we do have a, an MOU agreed on, if not, we'll have to, this council will have to make a very, very difficult decision, but I think we are prepared to make it if, if we have to. So, that, that is all on item number 27. I hope, I guess we'll be back next week for a vote of this city council, either on a MOU, or a vote of this council relative to pay and personnel policies for Phoenix Law Enforcement Association. We still have some items for the remainder of the agenda here, here tonight, and so, let's just plow through, so we can get, so we can.
Mayor, before everybody, before everybody leaves, I do want to say that, as we break, I did attend the police officer memorial. I was a few, as you saw, I walked in late. I was able to talk to some of the families, right before the ceremony outside started, and I did meet some children and grandchildren, so I did say my prayers for them.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Next item, Vice Mayor?
Councilman Gates is gonna move this one.
Councilman Gates?
Move approval of item 40.
Do you have a second on item number 40? We have motion in a second, do we have cards on item number 40, Mr. Clerk?
Oh, I see now, yes. The Hatcher Road project, roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Gates. Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, so the Hatcher Road Streetscape project passes on a eight-to-one vote, next item, Vice Mayor?
I move item 44.
All right, motion in a second. Mr. Clark, do you have testimony on item 44?
Oh, Mayor, can I, can I ask for that reconsider? I didn't, I thought we were doing 44, not 40. I was gonna, yeah, I would like to, I wanted, I was voting no on that one.
Okay, so, could someone make a motion for reconsideration on item number 40?
I just voted no, actually.
So, Councilman DeCecio would like to vote no.
Motion reconsider.
Second. Motion in a second, all favor? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, item 40, Councilman Gates?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have motion in a second, roll call. DeCecio.
No. Sorry about that.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item passes seven to two, 44, can we get the motion again? Right on the 44.
Motion in a second, Mr. Clark, as quickly as reasonably possible.
This is on the public spending. My name is Leonard Clark, I believe the things that you guys are supposed to be paying for, for the donations, public service, obviously. Well, I'm for it, Mayor, my name is Leonard Clark, I'm for this, because I think this is another good example, the city is going to be donating, I believe, through grants to certain charities, I hope that's what this item is on, I believe that's what it's on, so, anyways, hope you'll support it, thank you.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, roll call. DeCecio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item 57, Vice Mayor? So, question for the city clerk, so do we have cards on a specific item? Because I know Councilman Gates and I pulled two items.
Okay, so, hold out J and AD, and any other items you want to hold out?
All right, thank you. I move item 57, with the exception of item C, item W, item J, and AD. Second.
All right, motion in a second? No cards, roll call. DeCecio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item 57C. This is the Melrose Arch Lights, I believe.
I think so, so, anyone want to make a motion on 57C?
No takers?
I make a motion for 57, item 57C.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
All right, we'll second that item, what is 57C?
It's a payment.
The Melrose Arch, everyone's been talking about.
Mayor, members of the council, this is a project that was constructed with capital construction funds to create a gateway on 7th Avenue, north of Indian School, it was approved in the capital improvement program budget last year. The actual expenditure here is to pay a bill to APS for electrical work done for the archway, so that at nighttime, you can see it as well.
Okay.
And Mayor?
Next one, Gallego, please.
So, these services have already been rendered?
Mayor, members of the council, that's correct.
All right, so 57, do you have a question, any additional questions on 57C?
So, Mayor, I have some, a question for clarification.
Yes, please, uh-huh, Councilman.
So, what happens if we vote this down?
I have a question, too.
So, if, if the council were to vote this item down, Mr. Namark, any, maybe that's more a question for our city attorney.
Mayor, council, if the services have been performed, and council doesn't pay for them, then we risk the potential loss to recover those amounts.
Do we approve this already, this particular, the services at issue here?
Mayor, members of the council, this project was approved last summer to move forward as part of your budget, and the elements of the project were, were approved when you approved the project. I mean, we don't take each element and have the council separately approve a particular aspect of, of the project, so.
Okay, so the activities taken by APS was approved by this council, and now the payment ordinance is facilitating payment to APS?
That's correct.
Councilman Gates?
But just to be clear, we didn't actually vote on the, on a contract item that was, that, that had this electrification from APS, did we?
Mayor, members of the council, the, the contract was under the limit that you normally approve, the specific contract, there were lots of, there were other, a contract of this size, there would be normally, I mean, a project of this size, there would normally be other contracts as well, related to it, potentially, that would, would be under your specific approval limit for that contract.
We want, instead of voting here today, there's a lot of questions, we want to hold this item, ask for a representative of APS to come to our meeting, and to explain the work that was done, and the legal situation, I think we want to make sure, we want to make sure everyone is fully informed, before they vote on this item, it sounds like it's gonna be a controversial item. So, is there a need to vote on this today?
Mayor, members of the council, we can delay this item to another meeting, if you want to wait.
My request is that we continue this item till our next agenda, to give the opportunity for a APS representative to come make the case for, for the item. That's in the form of a motion, is there? My request is that we continue this item till our next agenda, to give the opportunity for every APS representative to come make the case for, for the item. That's in the form of a motion, do we have a second?
I have a question.
Please, go ahead, Councilman.
I guess my question is, this was approved, or this project was approved, was the services approved? Electrical part, was that part of the whole project?
The concept for the project originally was for it to be visible both during the day and night, so that, the, but the actual contract for the, the work to be done by APS was not specifically approved by the city council because it was below that limit.
Okay, so I will, I will wait.
Okay, so I, I've asked for continuance on the item. Do we have a second on the continuance?
May 28th, Mayor, would be fine.
Councilman Pastor, it's in your district. Are you okay with the continuance?
I am fine with continuing.
Okay, so motion to continue, we'll ask for APS representative to come and explain the situation, the dilemma. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, one no, so passes eight to one. Next item is 57J.
Move approval.
With motion and a second, Mr. Clark apparently has testimony on 57J.
No, maybe not, I'm sorry.
No problem. What about A and D? Do you still want to provide, do AD?
Yes, ma'am.
You do want to do AD? Okay, good. So motion and a second, 57J, roll call.
DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so Leonard Clark had listed 57AD as the next item, and Vice Mayor thinks that maybe we don't have.
No, I got it.
We do have an AD, okay.
Yeah, it's, we were skipping, and I had pulled W.
Yeah, so 57W would be the next item.
I don't want to move it, but I, I just want to say, just, I'll read it. To continue to provide art conservation services for Phoenix Sky Harbor International Airport through April 30th, 2015, for the aviation department. Ah, I'm, I'm too impolite not to say it. I'm not going to vote for it, so. Do as you will.
All right, no problem. Mr. Murphy, do you wish to provide information as to what the item would entail?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This is a continuing payment authority for art that we have on loan at the airport that we use and juried shows. It is only, we only need this if art is damaged. During the past two years, we've not used any of these funds, but it is a contract that allows us to, to restore art if something is damaged.
Let me remind you, any questions for Mr. Murphy relative to 57W? All right, we have a motion on 57W.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on 57W. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
No.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, 57AD.
I move 57AD.
Second.
A motion and a second. Mr. Clark, you're up. It is the payment of condemnation judgment.
Thank you, Mayor and council. My name is Leonard Clark, and I'm against this, but I'm sure there must be a good reason we're paying JP Morgan $99,000 for a condemnation judgment. It says, I just know that JP Morgan is probably smiling in his grave because this is the kind of thing he did when he was alive, and so now this big bank is getting $99,000 from us on a condemnation judgment, so my due diligence, I'll have to check. I'm sure we have a good reason to be paying these big, this big bank, JP Morgan, $99,000 of our tax dollars, because I just feel so sorry for the bankers. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Actually, Mayor, I would, would, we could ask the city attorney for a little bit more of information.
Councilman Gallego, I have a question, I apologize.
On the condemnation judgment?
Are we prepared to talk about the underlying judgment, or should we delay the, bring it back?
Mayor, we, we can bring it back for that. This is something that's placed on the agenda just for your information, the council does not actually have to act on that, is my understanding. It's just placed on there for information, and the payment to JP Morgan Chase is because they're for the fiduciary for the owner. It's not a payment for JP Morgan, it's JP Morgan holds the funds.
Okay, does that answer the question? All right, roll call.
No action required?
Oh, what's that?
No action required? It says no action required.
Let me describe that, Dan, please, what it's there.
Mayor, members of council, no action is required. It's just notice, it's a condemnation matter, it's an order, it's, it's paid, so because of the charter requirement, it's, it's already in order, and the reflection is 4213, which is in the city code, so that means that no action is required. It's just notice.
Okay. Move on.
Yes.
All right, next item, Vice Mayor, I think it's 59?
I move item 59.
We have a motion for 59. Do we have a second on 59?
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Councilman Gates had some comments.
And so do I.
Okay, Councilman DeCiccio, you go first. This has to do with the master license agreement for use of city property for installation of Google network huts. Councilman DeCiccio.
I think it's fantastic the city of Phoenix is bringing Google in. They bring in that high-speed internet, and that is an incredible move for the city of Phoenix. But there's two things I want to make sure. At what point are those huts going to be available for the public so that they can see where they're located at? I know we walked through some areas, but when is it public information? And how soon can we get, roll that out to the public so they can see what's going to be happening?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, the, when Google makes a decision to come here, then we will begin the dialogue about where, where do they want to locate huts. We can certainly share publicly the information that we shared with Google about potential hut locations, but there are hundreds of them, and Google's probably going to pick 20 or 30 of them, and so it probably is, is, I mean, if people want to talk about it, they can, but it's, it's a little bit early in the process.
But we can, but it is, so, I'm sorry, Rick.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's public information then to be able to, if anyone says, hey, I want to see where those potential hut locations are.
We, yes.
Okay, good, that's important, that's good. The other is, when we do these huts, we've got to make sure that we're able to allow access to other users, too. And is, is, can we, are we looking at doing that? I just want to get that stuff on the record.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, if, if other entities come in with a similar type of structure, similar type of service that they want to provide, and they'd like to put it on city property, we would offer a, a similar structure for them to be able to do so, providing that there's room. So if you have a particular site, and it was somewhat limited, and there was already a hut there by Google, there may not be room for another hut, but, but generally, the answer to your question is, yes, we would do that.
Thank you, and, because I want to make sure that whatever we do, we provide an equal playing field for, especially the companies that are from Arizona as well, so everybody gets an equal playing field. If a company from Arizona, similar services, were to say, hey, we want to be able to get the same level of service from the city of Phoenix, are we going to be treating them the same way?
Mayor, members of the council, if it's the same type of service and same type of, of, you know, operation, absolutely, yes.
Internet connectivity, basically.
Yes.
Okay, so good. I want to make sure that everybody's going to get treated the same. Again, I'm excited for this. I think it's a great move for the city of Phoenix to be able to, you know, to bid on this and make sure that we're going to get it. At the same time, you always want to make sure that there's an even playing field so that no one entity gets, you know, gets an advantage, or you pick winners and losers is really what people talk about, so that everybody gets treated the same. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Councilman Gates, you have comments?
Yeah, just briefly, I completely agree with the comments of Councilman DeCiccio. I think that's very important, and in the end, if we do that, it's going to, it's going to make Phoenix really a hub for all sorts of innovation in these areas. I want to thank the Mayor for his leadership on this as well, and Rick, I want to thank you and your, your team for the great work you've done on it. I think you've worked out a great deal, actually, for, for the city of Phoenix, so that's pretty much it. And am I the only one who kind of feeling like Jerry Lewis Telethon in here? Is it just me, or? Thank you.
Okay. Jerry Lewis Telethon?
You're showing, you're showing your age. Well, yeah, I remember.
Tiny other comments on the Google Hut. I just want to add to, Rick, to you, and City Manager, you know, Rick and his team have done really great work, and a lot of professionals have put in a lot of time to make this, get to this point as quickly as they, as they have, and we're one of the first regions in the country. I know Tempe and Scottsdale working really hard to, to get to the same position as, as we are, but there was a lot of challenges to, to get to this point, and you stepped up the plate and done a great job, so I just want to publicly say thank you for, for having done so, and I do support this. So, any other comments?
Thank you, Mayor. To Councilman Gates' point, my mother will be calling in soon.
Donating to help us close the budget?
Can we go to the tote board, please?
All right, roll, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, next item, Vice Mayor?
I'm not moving that one.
Oh, next one is item number 60, aviation uniforms. Do we have a motion on item number 60?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Murphy, you, is this your item? You want to briefly explain what, I'm asking for one?
All right, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This is a contract for uniforms for the aviation department. This amount of money is requested because a separate contract was terminated due to poor performance of the company that was providing those services. These are funds remaining or being transferred to this contract to allow uniforms for our operations group.
All right, any questions for Mr. Murphy on this item? We have, we have motion, we have a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item passes eight to one. Next item is item number 74. Do we have a motion on 74?
I move item 74. I think Councilman Gates, you had a.
Potential conflict.
We have a motion on 74. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is for CBG Grant. Maybe everyone, council can quickly look through, see if anybody has a potential conflict because of numerous nonprofits that are supported by this, serve any of these boards, just to make sure we cover ourselves appropriately. Every chance to look at it? Okay, so we have a motion on 74, second, noting, do you want us to pull out the one item?
Yeah, we could, we could certainly do that, so if we could pull out Foundation for Blind Children.
Okay, so let's do all of 74, holding out Foundation for Blind Children, that way Vice Mayor Gates can participate.
I move item 74, withholding the Foundation for Blind, Blind Children Vision Rehabilitation Services.
Second.
Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so now we do the Foundation for Blind Children?
I move item 74, the Foundation for Blind Children Vision Rehabilitation Services.
Second.
A motion and a second, noting Councilman Gates, potential conflict. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, next item is item.
76.
I move item 76.
Second.
76 and 77? I move item 76 and 77.
Uh, seven, okay.
Second.
So Leonard Clark, you have testimony on 76 and 77?
Thank you, Mayor and council. On 76, the IDA, it's late, not going to go into it. As you know, though, I have a lot of concerns about the Industrial Development Authority and liability for city of Phoenix because some, the charter says otherwise, but as for 77, I'm going to let that go on, except that there are no words to describe. You can't describe when a human being is lost, and then they, they give their life essentially for you and your family to be safe, and so, I didn't know I was going to be speaking on that, but I, I speak for myself and my family. I'm sure many citizens would agree with me.
You can't describe when a human being is lost, and then they, they give their life essentially for you and your family to be safe, and so I didn't know I was going to be speaking on that, but I, I speak for myself and my family. I'm sure many citizens would agree with me. Thank you to the officers, firefighters, officers, all of you, people out there. Thank you very much, and I'll let you do this memorial for this officer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark, for your testimony. Any comments, members of the council, on seventy-six, seventy-seven? Roll call.
DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item seventy-eight.
I move item seventy-eight, Councilman Gallego.
Second.
A motion and a second, noting.
I'd like to declare a potential conflict.
Thank you very much. Councilman Gallego has a potential conflict. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Williams.
Yes.
Waring. Mayor Stanton.
Yes, next item, I believe, is item number eighty-six. We have cards on eighty-six. Eighty-six is, we took testimony on it earlier. It's a proposed resolution, MOU, between the city of Phoenix and Launa, seven-seven-seven, unit, unit one. City manager, any presentation on it, or was it?
We can briefly summarize it if the council would like. Otherwise.
Okay, we'll take testimony first and see if any council members have, have questions.
It's probably the first time.
So I have Louis Schmidt to testify, Will Bubidus to testify, and Jennifer Wozniak, if necessary. Mr. Schmidt, you wish to go? Okay, Will.
Mayor, can I just put a motion on the table? Because we're going to wait for some finance numbers on travel and all that stuff.
Oh.
Continue. Motion to continue till next week, so we do it all at one time. See if there's any extra cash.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue the item, and then is there a second on that motion? All right, there's not a second at this time. Mr. Bubidus, please provide your testimony.
Oh, the only, Officer Will Bubidus from the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association. I would be in support of that motion, and the, and the reason why is because, as you guys know, there's a clause in this agreement that says if anybody else got more, so if you guys determine to give plea, or the police officers more, then you have to give it to them too, and essentially, you make plea bargaining for the entire city, which is drastically unfair to the police officers of the city. So that's the reason. I'd ask that be continued, and then you guys can look at all the contracts next week individually and decide what the appropriate course of action is.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Mr. Schmidt?
Forgive me for my tie, you know, but I, you know, I mean, I agree with Councilman DeCiccio's motion and what Will just, you know, stated. If you, I mean, you, the council has directed the city manager and the, and the employee representatives to get it done, but if you take this vote right now, you're not really saying get it done. You're just, you're taking, this is a decision that needs to be made by the council, and we need you guys to, you know, I mean, there's been some positive talk today, but this should be tabled until next week, and, you know, you, all the comments have already been made, but I, I strongly urge that this get continued. You guys are tired, you guys are, everybody's tired, and we need to continue this after we've had, looked at all the different facts that haven't been considered. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Jennifer Wozniak, do you wish to provide testimony on this item?
Good evening, almost morning. It's pretty close to morning, to Mayor and council. I wanted to just reiterate a few things. One, this was not an easy thing for the membership that I represent to vote unanimously to support. It was not easy. If there were more money, as Councilman DeCiccio said, we're naturally, we would take it. We would never say no to less cuts. That would never happen. This was the best deal that was presented to us. We took the city's last, best, and final offer that they gave to us for our membership. We spent hours talking about it. It does include a fairness agreement, an equitable treatment clause, a favored nations, there's so many words for that. Why is that? Our membership ratified this contract before any other union here. They did that. They stepped up and did that. Did they want to do that? No. They are very unhappy that they have to take cuts again, and again, and again. They're not happy about it. Maybe I get a little more active after ten o'clock. I apologize for that, but they're not, but they accepted it because they want to serve the community as best they can. They want to make sure that when they're in a dangerous position, and they are as well, refuse drivers in the top ten on the FBI list as well, they're in a dangerous position. They do die on the job, not like officers, and I represent officers in another state. Absolutely no disrespect for them at all, but they signed up to take cuts to help out the community because they said that was the right thing to do. We ask today that you vote in favor of our contract. If there's additional money, of course, we would never say no again, for the record. Thank you for your time tonight.
We have no more cards on, is anyone here to testify on the proposed MOU between city of Phoenix and Launa, seven-seven-seven? Councilman Williams?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I am going to move approval of this. We sent staff out to negotiate in good faith. The union negotiated in good faith, took it for ratification, and you ratified it. I think we have to show our words good, so I would move approval.
We have a motion, do we have a second on item eighty-six?
I'll second that.
All right, Councilman Noakowski has made a second. Any comments from a member of the council? In addition to what's been said already? All right, roll call.
DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
No.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, the item passes on a six to three vote. Traditional business for the city council, Mr. City Manager? We know other items? This meeting is adjourned.